Our director of code enforcement, you know, is supportive of it. He worked on it and, and this will actually provide him with the ability to enter the home and inspect.
Alright guys, we're back here at the studio. We got some breaking news. This is the evidence that they're going to use to fire five commissioners at least, possibly the mayor, definitely some county attorneys, and most likely the director of RER. So I'm going to lay down the evidence that will be used because Miami Dade County, they love to operate like an HOA, micromanaging everybody's lives. And that is not the job of government. They are not to micromanage our lives. And they have been passing illegal laws. So if you look here on the screen, you're going to see that this is the meeting that I spoke at November 1st. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Miguel Quintero. I live at 9651 Northwest 13th Avenue. I am in District 2. Now I'm speaking on 5D regarding the vacation rental. It actually does not hurt me right now. I think it will hurt me in the future. I have one acre of property in a very unique spot surrounded by two lakes. It is a vacation rental paradise. And although I do have a bedroom that I have not been able to rent out for over a year because of code enforcement saying that I have unpaid violations, which is untrue. I have no unpaid violations. Code enforcement has kept me from getting a certificate of use so I can post on Airbnb. But because I have an acre of land and I can fit more than two cars on my property, I would love to be able to put something on my property for vacation rentals, accessory dwelling, not attached, not a bedroom in my house where I can earn an income. I've done the math and I have lost over $100,000 in this year alone because of code enforcement doing something that is illegal. It is important that you remember that private property is sacred in the United States. And I understand that the intentions are good, but to tell people who they can invite into their home and how they can make money and then raise taxes and expect people to pay it when the easiest way to have a small business is to post a bedroom on Airbnb. Or if you're lucky enough to have a vacation accessory dwelling, post that on Airbnb, make a couple hundred bucks easily a week, if not more, is wrong. Please be careful about what you tell people they can and cannot do on their private property. It's one thing to work with contractors, developers. Another thing to make sure the trash is getting picked up. Employees are getting paid well with good benefits. Private property is sacred in these United States. Please keep that in mind when you make your decisions. I know I have seven seconds left. I thank you for your time. Thank you. So I have a single family home. You guys see that in the intro with the circle? I have a 1.03 acre lot. Now Miami Dade County is making it perfectly legal to build a mini house as long as it's smaller than your primary house. Whatever the size of your home is, if you're in Miami Dade County and you have a single family and as long as you have at least 7,500 square feet of lot coverage, you can build a house in the back or the side and that can be called an accessory dwelling. And there's two things that are happening. Accessory ADUs, accessory dwelling units, or guest houses. But if you do an ADU, now you can do rental. This is what this measure wants to do. Permitting accessory dwelling units. Now you can have a house in the back of your house or the side of your house and your neighbors can't say anything about it. Now it is perfectly legal and you can rent that out as long as you rent it out for six months and one day up. And you can charge a fee and then you have to do all these other regulation stuff. So you're paying taxes on it. So right here, and what they are trying to do is prohibit the use of accessory dwelling units and guest houses as vacation rentals. This is our problem. I'm going to show you the laws for the state of Florida regarding vacation rentals. So 5D, now this was withdrawn and I'll show you that. And this is 5D substitute is what was adopted. Okay, so there's regulation and economic resources, RER. And the director is Lourdes Gomez. So this is an ADU, accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Here is the ordinance and then the reference is 22-146. Permitting accessory dwelling units, but prohibiting the use of accessory dwelling units and guest houses as vacation rentals. And I'm going to show you why this is asinine, why this is stupid and why they are going to get fired. So the sponsors, Raquel Regalado, prime sponsor, and Eileen Higgins, co-sponsor. I have nothing personally against these commissioners. The only commissioner that I do have something personal against is my commissioner here in District 2, Gene Monastine, he's on his way out. What's that? Yeah, let's get back to it. Anyway, so the two, the three that said no was Chairman Diaz, Pepe Diaz. He's on his way out. He turned out Commissioner Soto, he's also on his way out. He's 82 years old. He's been serving for, I think, over 26 years. And then new to the, not new because I think he, Pedro Garcia is, I actually like him. Now remind you, remind you guys, these are three Republicans. You're not allowed to say that in Miami Dade County. We are a no party affiliate politician type of county. That's going to change because how un-American is that? The fact is we have a two-party system. Now, I am a registered Democrat. There it is. I don't have any plans to change for being a registered Democrat. But the Republicans have it right. They have it right in the state and they have it right in the county. And the Democrats love to lose elections. Democrats love to shoot themselves in the foot and they love to micromanage people's lives. And they love to lie to you. And that's not the party that I want to see. That's, that's why I must maintain being a Democrat because I gotta bring them back. They have gone too far, as have, now don't get me wrong. Some, I think Trump has gone too far. But again, that's a whole other story. I am a never Trumper. I will always say that. But the Republicans have it right on this one. They have it right on a lot of them. But I am a Democrat. Love me, hate me, that's my truth. Remember, hit that like, subscribe button. Also do the bell because I have all my lawsuits that I will be posting. So I'm not signing any NDAs. If you want to give me a settlement, you're going to give me a settlement for the public to see. I don't care if it's $15,000 or $15 million. You're giving me a settlement. The people are going to know what it is. You're going to take ownership of what you have done wrong. I think a settlement is going to bother them. I'm just going to go straight into the hypocrisy and the stupidity. I am going to show you where they overreach, where they overstep the bounds, where they don't do their due diligence. They think they do, but I'm going to debunk all their stuff. So here's what they say specifically about parking. In addition to the off-street parking requirements for the principal dwelling, which is my main house or, you know, your principal, your main house, one parking space shall be provided to serve an accessory unit in accordance with the following. Parking for the accessory unit shall be located, this is where it's important, within a driveway or in a designated parking area on the same property as the principal dwelling or on the street or swale. Here we go. The swale, how many of you know what a swale is? Let me learn you. There's a swale. What is a swale? Chances are if you've lived in Miami Dade County long enough, you've heard at least one person refer to a swale. Nope, all my life, never. So this is a swale. See the green check mark? That's a swale. Look how healthy that looks, right? A properly maintained swell with a curb. Note the car is parked on the street, not the swale. Note that it's not parked on the swale. And what did they say? I can stay on that same one. I come back over here. On the street or swale directly in front of such property if there is no driveway or designated parking area on the subject property and on the street parking is permitted in such areas. This is where it gets good, people. So a poorly maintained swell. Note, the entire swale area is paved and car is parked, car is parked on it. So note, a poorly maintained swell. Note, the entire swale area is paved. They don't want you to pave the swale. I agree. What looks better? That or that? That or that? Okay, so I'm not going to go into what a swale is. You know what it is. This is save our swales. Look, save our swales. This is Miami Dade County, by the way. Look up here, Miami Dade County. This is off the website. Look at the stupidity of what they're doing. Now, mind you, actually, this is a benefit to me, this whole thing that they passed. But I, they want to come onto my private property and tell me who I'm going to allow in and wait till you see some of the other things that they require for you to be able to rent this second house. And this is still zoned and you're going to see all this. Single family. Wait till you see how incompetent these commissioners are and how they shoved it down everybody's throat. And they did it in secrecy, basically?
Now we're talking about 203,000 families or homes that nobody have any idea what's going on in this situation.
And I'm going to show you proof. And other people are saying, nobody's going to know about this. This is being done in secrecy. Okay, so here. Why should I help save our swales according to Miami Dade County? All those swales are public property. They are typically owned by the county or perhaps the municipality you live in. By law, property owners are supposed to maintain the swale in front of their property. What? I can, what? I can park a swale for the second family that I'm going to move in. I can park on there, but parking the swale destroys the swale. But by law, property owners are supposed to maintain the swale? Okay, let's go into why. But you should help save our swales not only because it's the law, but because a well-kept swale looks good and helps maintain property value. It's true. A swale that does its job properly protects your home and your neighbor's homes by helping to minimize flooding when it rains. What? Minimize flooding when it rains? That's all the time here in Miami Dade County. Swales also help protect the environment and our drinking water supply by acting as filters to remove or reduce pollutants that get washed up by stormwater. Do you see what I'm talking about? Okay, so that is the whole swale thing. Here we go. Examples of poorly maintained swales. Note the paved areas and evidence of cars parking on the swale. They don't want that. Note evidence of cars parking on the swale and the compacted soil. They don't want that. Note evidence of cars parking on the swale and the compacted soil. I had to do it one more time. They don't want that. Here, this is what they want. By law, this is what they want. A properly maintained swale. Note that only the driveway approach is paved. Alright, so next we are going to go to here. I, this is what I have highlighted in my notes. An ADU may have electrical, water, gas, and other types of utility meters, a house address or unit number, and a mailbox that are separate from the principal dwelling. It's another house. That's the whole point. It's another house. You have a whole other house. But you're still zoned, single family. Okay, they passed this. This is happening. There is going to be a second house built on my property. The only thing is, I'm going to show you what they cannot do. Hey, they did it to themselves. And I'm really considering running for mayor. And this is why I have to though. Recurational vehicles, recreational vehicles and travel trailers shall not be used as accessory units. This they can make happen. This is part of their job. The other stuff I'm going to show you, they cannot. It is against state law. Let's go into it. So anyway, if you wanted to do a tiny house on wheels, because I thought about that. Not going to happen. What's that? Shut up, keep going. Okay. Alright, so we're going to keep it going. I'll go on to my next page. This is where it really starts to get fun. Let's see, we are in subsection 5, site plan review, and we are under A. So let's read what subsection 5 here says, or section 5 subsection A. At the time of application for building permit, because you're building a second house or certificate of use, each applicant for an accessory unit shall submit to the department, which department I don't know, but a department, maybe our, I don't know. A schematic site plan at a scale of not less than one inch equals 100 feet, prepared by a design professional. Here we go. Prepared by a design professional. Remember, this is law for Miami Dade County. And containing the following information. Hold on, hold on. Let's see now. We are going to now show you state code regarding design professional. So first, this is on Miami Dade County's website, right here. Owner builder permits. What is an owner builder permit? Miami Dade County offers permits to individuals who are performing work on their property without the benefit of a contractor. Additionally, an owner builder may apply for any trade permit, including building, roofing, electrical, plumbing, gas and mechanical with no additional requirements or certifications necessary. This is huge. That's part of my lawsuit. I was denied that. Don't you go thinking that you're going to get this in Miami Dade County, even though they have it on their website. Because again, save our swales. Alright, so there's that. That's Miami Dade County website. Let's go to state statutes. This is 481. We will go to that one. But first I want to go to 489.03.103. These are exceptions. Let's see where we are. So this is for contracting, chapter 483. This is November 8, 2022. We are up to date. I want to make sure you guys see that. September 8, 2022, up to date codes. We go down to 48103. Where were we? Exceptions. On there, I go down and I say, okay, this part does not apply to. And we go down, look, I already have it highlighted. Section 7 subsection A. Owners of property when acting as their own contractor and providing direct onsite supervision themselves of all work not performed by licensed contractors. That's what this does not apply for. You do not have to be a contractor, is what it's saying. When building or improving farm outbuildings or one family, two-family residences on such property for the occupancy or use of such owners and not offered for sale or lease. That means I'm not selling my property for at least a year, by the way. I think it says that here. You have one year. You can't sell it for a year. Or building or improving commercial buildings at a cost not to see, that doesn't apply to it. $75,000 is not commercial. Okay, on such properties for the occupancy or use of such owners and not offered for sale or lease. But that is one year. Okay. In an action brought under this part, proof of sale or lease or offering for sale or lease of any such structure by the owner builder within one year after completion of same creates a presumption that the construction was undertaken for the purposes of sale or lease. So I build this whole second house, can't sell the whole property, can't sell the two houses, whatever, for one year. Okay. Deal. I do not need a contractor, is what that says. Now, let's go to the other one. Cause what was it that it said over here? Where was it? Where was it? What did it say? Where were we? Swales, we're here. It said, prepared by a design professional. You have to submit plans, is what Miami Dade County says. So their website says you don't need any of those certifications. You can be your own contractor. You can build your own house. You do have to submit plans. You still have to go by building code. You still have to go by zoning. You still have to do all these. Nobody's saying you don't have to do these things. It just means you don't have to be a licensed contractor. You don't have to hire a licensed contractor. And watch, they want you to, they want this to be prepared by a design professional? I'm about to show you something wild. 481, I haven't written down. Alright, so again, November 8, 2022, chapter 481. These are architectural, interior design and landscaping architecture. That's what this chapter is all about. Design professionals. There. So exceptions. No person shall be required to qualify as an architect in order to make plans. What? No person shall be required to qualify as an architect in order to make plans and specifications for or supervise the erection, enlargement, or alteration of. Here we go. This is state law. Alright. Any building upon any farm for the use of any farmer, regardless of cost of the building. Doesn't apply to us. Any one-family or two-family resident building, townhouse or domestic building, appertinent, pertinent, appurtenance. Come on, Miguel. Appertain to any skipper. Call me skipper. To any one-family or two-family residents regardless of cost. Oh my goodness, Miami Dade County. Do you just put the middle finger out to the governor of the state of Florida and representatives of the state and house of the state of Florida? Are you not a bunch of hypocritical lawbreakers? Wait till I show you guys the list that Miami Dade County has that they can find you and even incarcerate you for not following county law. There it is, from the state. I'm not going to go any further because this video is getting too long. But we're also going to go to section, chapter 481.231. So 481.229. Let's go down, let's go down. 481.231. Effect of part locally. As if that wasn't enough, the state goes further and says counties. Miami Dade County. Or municipalities. I'm in a county, but city of Miami, city of Hollywood. City of, well Hollywood isn't proper, but anyway. City of North Miami, city of whatever, just like 150 cities in Miami, Dade County. Which issue building permits shall not issue. Wait, let me highlight this. Counties or municipalities which issue building permits shall not issue permits if it is apparent from the application for the building permit that the provisions of this part have been violated. Provided however, provided however, that this subsection shall not authorize the withholding of building permits in cases involving the exceptions and exemptions set out in 481.229. I'm just saying. I'm just saying. Look, I'm trying to keep you guys entertained here. Stay with me because it gets better. Look, if you have to rewind, rewind. You got to watch that again. Watch it again. Are you kidding me? Alright, so moving right along. Other information and plans that the director deems necessary to evaluate compliance with this section. So what does that mean? The director of RER has full discretion to tell you how you are going to live on your dirt. On the Miami Dade County. Okay. So that's subjective. Alright, now we go down to, my notes say, come down here. Notwithstanding anything in this chapter to the contrary, a certificate of use, CU. Remember, on my other videos I've mentioned CUs. I've been denied all the CUs I've ever applied for. I keep getting denied CUs. But anyways. A certificate of CU shall be required for each accessory unit. What is a CU? Should we get into that right now? Let's get into what a CU is. Is this going to be it? Nope. Oh, so here we go. This is what I want to show you guys, right here. I'm going to show you real quick. This is the mayor. This is the chairman. He voted against. Gilbert wasn't there. These four right here are the ones that voted for plus Raquel Regalado, District 7. District 2, 3, 4, 5 voted yes. And District 7. She was the one who sponsored and the co-sponsor was right here, Eileen Higgins. I could be wrong, so let me double check it. Double check, double check, double check. Originally it was Eileen Higgins. That is correct. So there you go. 13, this guy's went to jail. This guy's out. Jose A. Martinez, he is gone. This guy you're going to see in the, in the video. He's been there forever. He's the property appraiser. He warned the commission against this. As did I, because I spoke. Okay, so these are, this, this is Soto. He voted against. Garcia, I don't even know if I already said this in the video. And Pepe Diaz, Jose Pepe Diaz, he's out. Mostly, a lot of these, some of these guys are out. Anyway, let's go to, I think it's here. Here it is. Right, yes, yes. Certificate, what is a certificate of use? There is a difference between, let me highlight as I go. I just don't want to click on any buttons. There's certificate, there's a difference between a certificate of use and a local business tax. Mind you, I've had a local business tax pretty much since I've moved in here, two years ago. And the CU allows for the occupancy of a structure as well as clarifying, certifying that the use is permitted. A local business tax formerly known as an occupational license. Cause some of you down up there, you still have occupational licenses because that's, it's always been known as an occupational license, is a tax on business activity. You've got to remember this about a CU and a local business tax. What's that? Yeah. That's what it is. And you're going to see that you're going to, if you want to have a business in Miami Dade County, even a home-based business, this is what you are required to have. It's called an LBT, local business tax. A CU allows for the occupancy of a structure as well as certifying that the use is permitted. So it says, after a CU has been issued, you may apply for a local business tax. Well, I applied for a local business tax and I was granted a local business tax and I never received a CU for my, my home-based business. But for, for a local business tax, you go here. Prior to opening a business in Miami Dade, in unincorporated Miami Dade County, a CU must be obtained. I'm going to show you where that's false. Starting a business without obtaining a CU may result in a fine and the issuance of a ticket to both the business owner as well as the property owner. By the way, I have two citations for certificate of use. I'm going to win and I'll show you, I'll show you why. But that's either going to be a whole different video for my home-based business or I might touch on it a little bit here because it is good. It is good, it's really good. A CU is required when an industrial or commercial building. A CU is required when an industrial or commercial building is erected, altered or enlarged, or an existing building goes through a change of occupancy, name, or type of business. Shell businesses, sorry, I'm sorry. Shell buildings do not require a CU. This is huge. There's my lawsuit. Again, another video. So you saw that? A CU is required when an industrial or commercial building. What part of private property residency is commercial? Okay, okay, Miami Dade County. Is there anything else here? The certificate of use, often referred as CU assures that the business is allowed in the zoning district where it is located. It also verifies that the, that the structure was built for the proposed type of business. Now look, or i.e. restaurant, convenience store. Again, there's no mention of a home there. And I understand that. And I don't think that the county has an issue requesting the CU because if you build a home, you've got to get it inspected. There's no way around that. That's what I'm talking about. You can do it. You could do it on your own, even though they say you need a design professional, which you don't. But you still have to pull the permit. So a CU, they could still require that. That's not the issue here. As you can see, there are other issues. The issue is this next part. Alright, they want to be, they want to do it. And actually, let me just go to it. Oh, where am I? So we're here. Let's go back to here. A CU for an accessory unit may only be obtained by the property owner or the principal dwelling. Yes. The CU shall specify the following. Type of accessory unit, guess how, an ADU. Size of the accessory unit, whether the accessory unit is attached or detached from the principal dwelling. Okay, so yeah, all this makes sense for a CU. Whether the accessory unit is occupied or vacant. And if occupied, the names of the occupants with such information updated upon a change of occupants or when the CU is renewed, whichever occurs first. Did somebody say Fourth Amendment? Are you kidding me? That's not what a CU was designed for. That wasn't its intent. Can I read that again? Whether the accessory unit is occupied or vacant. So it says, notwithstanding anything in this chapter to the contrary, a certificate of use shall be required for each accessory unit. Whether the accessory unit is occupied or vacant. And if occupied, the names of the occupants. It gets better. It gets better. Okay. okay whether any vehicle are registered to or used by the accessory unit occupants now they want the registration of the cars and the plates if so the vehicle plates associated with such vehicles with such information updated upon a change in vehicles or when a CU is renewed whichever occurs first do you like them apples this is law this is law in Miami Dade County I am doing these videos and I'm doing them at a particular sequence so if you go back and you watch him you can see what I'm talking about Miami Dade County is infiltrated by communists and socialists and I'm a freaking Democrat
or are we gonna create a legal pathway where people can know who the tenants are where we can control the cars where we can control the noise and where we can ensure that this is done properly
they're taking over they have no regard for the Constitution and that's why I wear it right here I have one in my pocket right here on my chest oh you know what let's 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 just talk for a second let's say that you have an accessory dwelling you 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 jump through all their hoops and you do all these things right now let's say that you have a big yard like mine and you have family that comes in I have a four bedroom it's only my wife and I live here four bedroom through back and let's say that I have uh my wife's brother his wife and his two girls let's say they come to my house and I have the accessory dwelling I have the family that live back and they come down and they have their car and they're gonna stay with me for two weeks let's say that the people living in the back they take a two-week vacation now their car is gone and there's this new car in my driveway code enforcement can come around and document all they want and they can issue me a citation now I have to go to court to prove my innocence where else in America is this happening who is allowing this to happen cuz this man right here is not gonna allow this to happen the ADU is gonna happen I'm gonna show you this is gonna this is a law that's gonna stay and I guarantee you it's gonna stay because all the other commissioners are gonna be like touching that one I'm out these five that approved it and the mayor and I love this mayor I don't care you are messing with people's lives you're gonna have some answering to do okay let's move on let's move on cuz it's a big video it's a big video alright so next on our list we're going down to E for guest houses a one-time CU shall be obtained one-time CU that's actually the way it's supposed to be can't fault them on that that's the purpose that's the intent of a CU you build a guest house you pull CU okay for an ADU the CU shall be renewed annually no this was approved under the uh under as amended the request was every three years by Jean Monistin Jean Jean Monistin that was requested every three years not every year are you kidding me they don't even know these commissioners don't even know and the attorneys of the county they they're out there's no way they stay in after this they're fired that one is the first to go because those are attorneys but the commissioners who do they have on their team this the buck stops with the commissioners now G Monistin is out anyway so he's he's fired anyway but for the next commissioner that goes in you remember me because even if I voted for you even if we have spoken as much as I love the mayor I'm coming after her and as much as I love you this is people's lives you're dealing with I'm gonna be on you like white on rice that is my job now alright so here we go each CU every three years right so that's basically what it is and changes to the ADU the occupants thereof and the vehicles associated therewith shall be updated at least annually every three years no annually at the time of renewal that one is gonna be at the time of renewal so even if it's not annually maybe it's three years it doesn't matter when you have to renew or the vehicles associated thereof shall be updated as we discussed before when you change the occupants because let's say you do it every year you get a new family come in or every six months or whatever well now the government has to know not only my car here in my house but the people who live in the back and if I'm wrong about my car it's definitely the people living in the back you are not privileged to the Constitution alright so let's move along cuz it gets better prior to the issuance of or renewal of a CU the accessory unit shall be subject to inspection to ensure compliance with all applicable code requirements so remember you gotta pull CU every three years now it says amended or you gotta pull CU every time somebody moves out they're gonna come at least to your property and they're gonna look even if it's from the outside fence of your property they're coming alright so double I each required each required document that the applicant fails to provide shall constitute a separate violation of this section you are guilty until proven innocent here it is presumption of illegal use and then we're gonna come all the way down to four that's what I have highlighted what's that what's that keep it moving keep it moving okay we're gonna come down to four that's what I have highlighted the number of vehicles parked overnight or registered to the subject property address is disproportionate in relation to the number of bedrooms or occupants of the principal dwelling it's what I go back how many of you have family that come over you don't have enough bedrooms but hey you have a couch you have an air mattress and they're gonna sleep on the living room Miami Dade County is actually going to come out I mean look they don't pass these things and and they have to enforce these things cuz they wanna make their money this is all being done so they have more ways to come out harass you and make money remember in a previous video I said it we are the moneybags and ten point three billion dollar annual budget that's not enough there's more to be taken so they're telling you hey you can make a living you can make extra money we're gonna get more of it and another more and another more and another more right a little bit more every time right so anyway the number of vehicles parked overnight or registered to the subject property so this is what uh presumption of illegal use is presumption remember you are uh guilty until proven innocent anyway so there you go providing the department with access to the subject property for the purpose of verifying compliance that's if there's a presumption of illegal use remember this is presumption of illegal use you must provide the department with access to the subject property for the purpose of verifying compliance with all the provisions of this section if the property owner fails to demonstrate compliance with this section subject to confirm uh confirmation by the department the presumption shall remain and enforcement shall continue Fourth Amendment this is like the third or fourth example that I've given Miami Dade County does not believe in the Constitution alright so there's the Fourth Amendment now you ask what's the enforcement or penalties let's get into it any person operating an accessory unit without a CU or otherwise in violation of this section shall be subject to enforcement in accordance with Section eight CC dash ten and Section one dash five or both and it says or both and to all other enforcement measures authorized in this code or by other applicable laws I mean you can tell this was written by attorneys they're all written by attorneys but you can tell this was written by some of the finest attorneys the country has to offer remember you're dealing in South Florida Miami you got New York you got Chicago LA Miami these are your powerhouses in this country and where do the best attorneys in the world live I know you're gonna think New York and you got a good guest there it's Miami it's Miami Miami has the best attorneys South Florida in general I should say cuz it's West Virginia you know South Florida it's Miami no better attorneys we have the best and our tax dollar demands the best attorneys to write laws against us who pay them alright so anyway uh so here we go here we go Section one this is the main one I wanted cuz this is faster Section one dash five uh let's go to that Section one dash five let's see if I find it fast uh here is Section one dash five here is Section one general penalty compliance civil liberties criminal I should be highlighting highlighting criminal liability penalties okay so here we go unless otherwise specified provided herein any person violation you know person violating any of the provisions of this code shall be punished by the a fine not to exceed five hundred dollars that's not true because I can show you in the other section it's like twenty-five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars and some things or by imprisonment in the county jail for a period not to exceed sixty days it's a self it's a civil matter but you're going to jail son you're going to jail sixty days that's happening are you kidding me okay moving right along moving right along next part of my notes I know it's long I'm doing my best to keep you guys entertained I am a little bit out of character but this is important so I'm going to try to change levels and keep you guys engaged alright so here we go let's go to number fourteen back to where we were which is here number fourteen number fourteen number fourteen now you guys are welcome to read through this you saw the ordinance you can download it feel free to read through it maybe I'm full of uh doo doo whatever as you can see here there's first offense five hundred second offense a thousand uh each subsequent offense twenty-five hundred uh illegal maintaining a houseboat is a hundred dollars dude thousands if you go to if you go to what was it eight CC dash one zero thousands of ways that they can give you a citation thousands okay so we're going down we're going down fourteen vacation fourteen okay so here fourteen accessory units where a property has an accessory unit as defined in Section thirty-three dash one the entire property comprised of the principal dwelling and the accessory unit may be used as a single vacation rental but neither the principal dwelling nor the accessory unit may be used as a vacation rental separate from the other now this is what they're talking about if I build this ADU right now the way the Miami Dade County has it according to this is I have to rent both out at the same same time to one person or one group essentially I can't live in my house and rent out the uh ADU uh to as in Airbnb short-term vacation rental is essentially what that is that's what they're saying here now this is the next part because I showed you the whole unconstitutional thing and all that stuff let me show you where they continue to break uh state law and for that I have to go to chapter five oh nine inspection of premises remember this is state law and it says here the division of the state has jurisdiction and is responsible for all inspections required by this chapter did I read that right the division has jurisdiction and is responsible for all inspections required by this chapter okay just keep that in mind keep that in mind keep that in mind all inspections Miami Dade County public lodging units classified as vacation come on vacation rentals or timeshare projects but vacation rentals are not subject to this requirement but shall be made available to the division upon request okay so vacation rental you know short-term you saw what it was that's what a vacation rental is it's uh anything that's you rented out uh for less than thirty days or one calendar month whichever and at three times a year if you do that you are a vacation rental okay 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 let's keep moving let's keep moving cuz obviously it gets better the good stuff let's go down number seven number seven number seven right here number seven preemption authority what is preemption look it up now I'll tell you I'll tell you okay basically the meaning a higher level of government eliminates authority of a lower level of government there you go preemption authority who has the authority higher level of government eliminates the authority of the lower level of government right so then the regulation of public lodging establishment establishments which a vacation rental is a public lodging establishment is preempted to the state you guys are welcome to read whole thing but I this is how I have in my notes I can just get it to you nice right alright but they go a step further B a local law ordinance or regulation may not prohibit vacation rentals or regulate the duration or frequency of rental vacation rentals this paragraph does not apply to any local law ordinance or regulation adopted on on or before June first twenty eleven damn it that's where they got me no they didn't come on guys I'm getting a little too excited here right okay it does not apply to any local law ordinance or regulation adopted on or before June first twenty eleven official file copy clerk of the board county commissioners Miami Dade County memorandum amended agenda item number seven A the Honorable Chairman Esteban Elbovo which I think he's with the city of Miami now not to be convinced with Bobo Junior but anyway date October seventeen twenty seventeen ordinance relating to regulation of vacation rentals creating Section thirty-three dash two eight of the code requiring a certificate of use and establishing zoning regulations for vacation rentals and blah 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 and there it is it's all that stuff AC it's basis come on they just introduced something new with the ADU so no matter what the ADU concept is happening that's new and now they want to regulate it but the state says now if I can go back to it that it cannot be regulated a local law ordinance or regulation may not be not may not prohibit vacation rentals or regulate the duration or frequency of rentals of vacation rentals take a moment do these commissioners and these attorneys not know what they're doing yes they do they just didn't figure they didn't calculate me or you cuz we are the same they didn't calculate us because they are the elite and the rest of us were dum-dums welcome back to earth people welcome back to earth moving right along so that is state regulation alright so what classifies what classifies I know I went through it before but now I'm really gonna tell you what classifies as a public lodging establishments five oh nine point two four two and you're gonna I think you're gonna see this also in no they're not gonna okay you may not see this so let's do it now okay two four two two four two this is way down way down yeah cuz I that's right cuz I didn't print out all this stuff by the way I went through everything you see all of this I went through it oh yeah yeah alright so there's uh five oh nine two three two we're going to we're going to two four two two four two is very important licenses required exceptions so anyway all this stuff is something for the future so here you go public lodging right here five oh nine point two four two public lodging establishments classifications eh a vacation rental is any unit or group of units in a condominium or cooperative or any individually or collectively owned single family two family three family or four oh 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 eh house or dwelling unit you can see that's what a unit is it's it's a unit now it's not a piece of the unit that's a bedroom that hopefully I I some were my notes I think I go into it so a bedroom is completely separate right but I think I do go into it but because no no I'm just gonna wait I'm gonna wait cuz it gets better it gets better wait till you see so there you go that's a vacation rental single family blah 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 what is it a vacation rental is any unit or group of units and that's you know this right here public lodging establishment classifications alright you guys saw that you guys saw that right alright now let's move on to the next one so let's go back let's go back to the notes which are here alright we are going to Section six if any section subsection sentence clause or provision of this ordinance is held invalid the remainder of huh typo of this ordinance shall not be affected by such invalidity this is happening we are going to build people have the right to build people have the right to build a second house second meter electrical meter water lines a second house on the back or to the side of their house you can read through the ordinance and see what it says as long as you have seventy-five hundred oh you can go into the details that's going to happen and I'm gonna tell you why that is important right there and it's gonna happen why they cannot stop vacation rentals because the state preempts authority speaking of authority delegation of authority and this is where we get back to and what I said before everything comes down to one person who gets to choose how they're going to dictate your life I mean the commissioners basically gave one queen the power to do whatever she wants delegation of authority the proposed ordinance delegates authority to the director of the Department of Regulatory and Economic Resources to approve certain administrative adjustments and otherwise administer the accessory unit regulations who is that who is it there she is Lourdes M Gomez director let's make it bigger sorry Lourdes M Gomez Director Regulatory and Economic Resources there she is in all her glory lovely lady I mean she was gorgeous to me if you 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 saw her in a previous video uh the one the the video the the you know what I'll I'll put it up I'll put it up here right I'll 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 click it up there and you'll see her in there and she listened to me I don't nothing got done cuz I got I got a citation for something I'm obviously gonna win uh but you know they stick to their guns so yeah uh let's go back to that and so everything comes down to one person and that is our queen alright so social equity statement this is also very uh funny they're trying to justify why they're doing this and this is Commissioner Regalada basically who came up with this and it's always a team of course but the proposed ordinance is anticipated to increase the proposed ordinance is anticipated to increase available housing opportunities for older adults, empty nesters, young adults, and others by providing additional non-transient dwelling units in existing single-family neighborhoods. Now, here, they're talking about the guesthouse. Authorizing ADUs as a, as provided in this ordinance would promote multi-generational living and efficiently use existing transportation and unincorporated municipal service area, the UMSA. ADUs may also create opportunities for homeowners to reduce their housing costs by providing an opportunity to generate rental revenue for existing space on their lots, or in their principal dwellings by renting an ADU to another household on the media, the mainstream media, the local news. I didn't hear anything about this. And then they passed this after they knocked it down? Moving right along, flawed ideology, guys, we're almost done. Let's see, let's see, let's see. ADUs can play a significant role in providing a solution to housing affordability and housing supply chains, challenges. We just said no. ADUs can create an income stream for existing homeowners. Sure, Bob. When larger homes are priced, I mean, it can, it can, just not the way that they want it. When larger homes are priced out of range for many potential homebuyers and homeowners, investing in and improving one's own property with an ADU may present a viable solution. ADUs may also help renters by potentially increasing supply and lowering the price. Now, there they have something. The fact is, if a lot of people, this is the way that it works on Airbnb, if a lot of people are doing Airbnb, high supply, and, uh, demand stays the same, even if it's high demand, but you get more and more supply, what happens? The price drops, right? You build more houses, the price of houses go down. But we can't do vacation rentals, according to Miami-Dade County. Again, I promise you, all of this is going to change, because when the governor sees the incompetence of what is going on in Miami-Dade County and the illegality, good luck, commissioners, good luck. Moving on, this is the last point I have to make on, uh, this, and it's the very last thing on this whole thing. Thing, 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 thing. Alright, it says here, these proposed regulations are intended to enable homeowners to create ADUs while providing regulations, protecting the single-family character of the surrounding neighborhoods and avoiding overburdened some review process and restrictions. After everything you just heard, does this make sense to you? These proposed regulations are intended to enable homeowners to create ADUs while providing regulations, protecting the single-family character of the surrounding neighborhoods, and avoiding overburdened some review process and restrictions. Does this make sense to you? That's it, that's it, that's what I have. That's what I have. An hour and twenty-six minutes, I'll try to bring it down, that's what I have. You guys, we are in for a fight. You know, every step of the way, I knew I was going to win. And some of the things, I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna lie to you, I didn't know what I was doing, but I kept researching. And sometimes I did sound like an idiot, and you know what, that's okay. It's on them to help me out, and they don't help me out, they don't help you out. If you live in Miami-Dade County, you are a moneybag. And if I run for mayor, you remember me, cuz you will hear more about me. Subscribe. You're gonna see more, cuz this is just the beginning, cuz I'm gonna show you everything. No NDAs, if they're gonna settle, I'm gonna tell you everything that's going on. And I just might have some interviews with some top politicians. Hey, guys, it's starting to rain. I love you, I love my wife, and I wish you my kind of happiness. I'll see you tomorrow.